Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Ms. Amy Kelly, Board of Adjustment Report.
Yes, sir. We have a recommendation for approval unanimous. It's a consideration of a request to construct a vinyl retaining wall six feet into the east and west side property lines on Lot 35, Peninsula Point, Unit 7, 1037 Gulf Shore Boulevard, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Dell Crowson, agent for Alfredo Menendez applicant. We have a few images. This is the site plan that he turned in, and he is going across the front of his property, and he's gonna have some turnbacks here, and they'll be about four feet off each property And here is a side view. It's gonna be a couple of feet from the deck. He's gonna have about eighty cubic yards of field behind the vinyl seawall. And then I put together a map of some erosion and scour. If you'll notice, this is the Menendez property. To the left, the image is a 2013 imagery from the Property Appraisers website, and the red line shows the measurement from the water's edge, and the water's edge is about one hundred and ten point nine feet from the house property, I mean, from the edge of the house. The mean high tide is approximately sixty point five six feet from the mean high tide. We recently, the Google Earth is a 2017 imagery, and this is about how much property's lost on the water's edge from the Menendez property. It's approximately, since the water's edge since 2013, they've lost sixteen point three six feet from the water's edge, but the erosion from scour, they've lost approximately thirty one point one two feet from scour. So the mean high tide has extended up to thirty one extra feet towards the house.
Can you just give me the scale? Is this the corner?
Yes.
He's looking for the point.
Here's a point.
Oh, here's the point, I'm sorry. Alright, so the county owns the property right there. We were deeded that lot by a woman who abandoned her property because she couldn't build it. Next to it is a house that's been abandoned, and it's gonna fall down, and beyond that is another house that ought to move off. So this is the end of the road going to Gulf Shore Boulevard. This is where we've had to stop the road because the erosion out here is significant. I mean, and I hate to tell the people on property out there, I mean, it's not stopping. These people are at tremendous risk. That house has a vinyl seawall, I don't believe, and I just wish I could give these people hope that there's some, you know, cessation of erosion, but it's a strong, it's a problem down there.
This is on the Gulf side?
It's on the Gulf side.
Yes.
So we're gonna put a retaining wall on the Gulf side?
Yes, sir.
Is that normal?
It's allowed, but it's something Seaway Coast Control owns, so they have to get a permit from the state, and the state will give you a permit to protect your house. You can't protect a vacant lot, but you can protect your house. Yeah, so this, I believe this house has a vinyl seawall, you barely see it right there.
But it's up against the house?
Yeah, this will be up against the house.
Yes.
Okay, it's not stuck out on the beach?
No, it's what, six feet from the house?
It's probably five feet, it's just like a couple of feet in front of their deck.
Okay, okay.
I'll show you this image. This is a side view. This is the house. This is like the edge of the house. There's a deck, and then this is where the seawall will begin.
Now, when I say that, this is all Seaway Coast Control, and so they have to get a permit from the state.
It is, they will have to get a DEP permit, but DEP will not issue a DEP permit without a variance.
Will it throw water on the neighborhood?
Sir.
It might, but the water's coming there anyway. I hate to be so blunt, I mean, that's one reason ladies fall out of town.
A seawall's not gonna stop that down there.
Need a beach renovation. Pleasure to the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We actually have a neighbor here who wanted to comment to the board of what their position is on this application for seawall.
Go forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, I'm Bert Bolt, and I live exactly next door to this permit. I live at 1039 Gulf Shore Boulevard, and I was present for the Board of Adjustment meeting of two weeks ago, but I was not able to speak just due to a lack of communication, but I'm opposed to this application. I wanted to just give you some idea history of what critical erosion looks like. Here's some photographs, there's some aerial photographs. That's critical erosion as designated by the Department of Environmental Protection for this particular part of property that goes along what you now know as Gulf Shore Boulevard and the homes that are there. And the reason I'm opposed to having any kind of a retaining wall, particularly in this design, is because of the exacerbation that erosion is going to do, that's caused by a seawall. Here's an example of a, we call them seawalls, retaining walls, it's the same kind of thinking. Here's a retaining wall that is probably no more than two years old, and you're looking at a picture that has been photographed from the west, from the east to the west. In that particular picture, the reason you see dead trees right there proximal to the western side of that retaining wall is because that retaining wall caused erosion. Doing its job made it worse for the proximal property to the west of it. The sand and fill was eroded out from under those trees, the trees fell down, the trees are dead, and there's the example of exactly what this permitee's seawall will do to my property. Here's an example of a seawall that was done that's right there right now, and in a piece of abandoned property. That seawall was breached by Hurricane Hermine. And by the way, just parenthetically, there is no standard of practice for the construction of a seawall. If it's signed off by engineers, it's considered to be, I guess, permissible. However, you can see an example there of a product that was done, signed off by an engineer, failed, and now it's abandoned, and we don't have incidentally any cleanup legislation or recommendations or rules to clean up seawalls after they have gone away. This particular lot that you're now considering for a retaining wall, I have two pictures of that property looking in front of the property. Now, these two pictures are taken of the home that wants to build the retaining wall that you're considering. There is a retaining wall already there, and from the sketches that you see here, it looks like it has an embedment already down ten feet from what I'm able to see here. So you have a history, if you see these photographs here, of erosion along the entire length of the beach in that particular area, and adding a seawall is going to simply exacerbate the problem. I have a particular problem because of the fact that if you have a look at the sketch that we have a site plan for, I think it's just above here, the site plan shows that there's ninety linear feet proposed by the retaining wall. That's handwritten on the left-hand side of the site plan. If you add up all of the linear dimensions of this particular retaining wall, it is not ninety feet, it's a hundred and two feet. I added them up, it's a hundred and two feet. Now, that home does not sit square on its own property. The side yard setback is depicted there, and I know it's difficult to see that side yard setback on the western side, is six point eight six feet, six feet point eight six inches. The permitee wants to build a seawall with wings that go into the side yard setback six feet. Now, from the math that I've done, it looks like that's less than one inch away from my westerly property line. I have a septic tank that's there and a drain field, and that, this system is gonna do nothing but exacerbate and erode that already pristine beach area that we have. So I feel very concerned that this instrument is being considered here. I don't think it's appropriate at all. The appropriate thing is, when you buy homes like this, like I did, let buyer beware. Let buyer beware, which means, is the home up the way it belongs in current building standards? Is the home set back the way it should be in current building standards? And that's the way you preserve your home. You don't do it by adding another seawall and then facilitating destruction to the integrity of the neighbor's property as this one would do with mine. And I'm open for questions.
Any comments from the board? I think the board is fully aware of what we're facing on Alligator Point, and it's gonna be a continual problem.
Yes, sir.
The problem the board faces this morning is, do we allow a property owner to try to protect this property, or do we not? I agree with you. Myself, seawall just moves the problem down to the next property owner, to the next property owner, but how do you sit here as a board and discourage someone from trying to protect their property? That's a catch twenty-two for the board. I'm not gonna protect my property, but this guy wants to protect his, keep it from washing away, and it may not be before a year or two, before it actually happens. You know, the issue you have on Alligator Point is, you know, the wave action takes sand away in a matter of thirty years, it may put the sand back. Who knows when that time comes that it'll actually deposit sand back, or if it does? You know, that's mother nature at work. So the quagmire for the board this morning is, Mr. Bert, is, do we allow this person to try to protect their property? Because we've tried to do beach renourishment, nobody on Alligator Point wants to help pay for the beach renourishment that would protect all the homes. That's another issue the board has dealt with, and dealt with the people of Alligator Point trying to provide beach renourishment to protect everybody's home on the Gulf side. Nobody wants it. This guy's willing to put up a retaining wall to try to protect his property, and I agree with you, it's gonna exacerbate the problem on either side. What does the board do? It's gonna be the pleasure of the board here.
Sure.
I'm just the chairman, so I don't get to make the motions or the seconds, but...
And I respect that.
It's a big problem, and it's not just for this property.
Certainly.
It's the next property, and the next property, and all those properties along the Gulf of Mexico right there on Alligator, not quite so bad at Ballpoint, but sure, things south going towards the tip of Alligator Point is gonna have an issue.
Notice that this property owner already has a retaining wall. That flat structure that I have photographs of seems to be shown that it's embedded ten feet already in there, and I...
I understand, but it's right up under his house. What he's trying to do is protect this property forward of his house.
Well, no, it's C-word of his house. It's right in front of his home, not under, and it allows him to have access with his driveway going forward.
Looks like to me it's under his house. But anyway...
It may be a porch, it may be a porch there.
It's a big problem to, for the board to address when you're saying you can't protect your property because you're gonna mess up somebody else's property. And I understand, and if I was in your shoes, I would feel the same way.
Sure, I understand.
But how do you tell somebody that they cannot protect their property?
Maybe it's a consultative role. Perhaps the owner should have looked at, well, I looked at the possibility of raising my house up and moving it back, which is a new standard of building practice today, rather than going through this erosion issue. And maybe there can be guidelines the commission can do rather than wholeheartedly summarily approve something, and then we have other potential alternates that have not been considered.
These, the pictures that you're showing me here, it doesn't look like this house was built yesterday?
No, sir, it wasn't.
And there was probably a lot of sand in front of this house.
Oh, there was.
When you're saying move it back and do this, it probably was moved back at some point, but now all the sand's gone, as you wrote it. I wrote down with Mr. Pierce last year and looked at a lot of this stuff, and we were talking about doing beach renourishment down there, and I seen septic tanks rolled over where, and he wrote it up under the septic tanks of some of these homes. Lot of homes abandoned as you were... And then I seen some guy out there just past the firehouse was putting in field and gonna build a house there.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, Jesus Christ.
I know.
He had no kind of protection. I don't know what he's doing or how that's gonna work for him, but there's some issues on Alligator Point.
Yes, sir, there are.
We wrote from one end to the other and addressed some of these issues, and, or not addressed them, but looked at them and how we could address them.
Bert, some of those photographs you take, I mean, evidence is overwhelming, there's a erosion problem out there, and we all agree to that. The photographs you show document the evidence that the state, in fact, some of those are actually the state of Florida did. Some of that vertical seawall you're showing, those photographs was put by the state of Florida trying to protect the original Ballpoint Road back in the city.
Yep.
I mean, here's a failure, I can fail you, and I agree what you're saying, and it's a no engineering design for that. We've experienced that in litigation ourselves when you're building and protecting things, but the way the rules are, the state of Florida issues a permit for that, that's all you need, is a permit to build it, a permit to maintain it. And it does put, I realize it puts a risk on your house, I will say that when you had a lot further down on Ballpoint, you yourself was proposing seawall.
You bet.
You were trying to save a lot, they get big enough to build a lot.
Only because it was a seawall next to mine at the time, doing the same thing I'm telling you about now.
That's true.
That's the only reason.
That's true, but without seawalls, you wouldn't have a lot, you wouldn't have any land, because the erosion out there is so, is so tough, I mean, erosion is so high out there that I don't know what other solution there is for the property, including yourself right now next door. I just, it's a...
That's what I'm saying, I mean, how do you tell one person, no, you can't protect your property, you gotta lay the road in thick, of course. I understand Mr. Bert's point, because the way the wings are on this vinyl seawall is it just deflecting right on down to property owners on either side. I understand, but what do you, what is the board supposed to do?
And the intrusion on an already impaired side yard setback of only six feet.
I agree, and I suspect, I don't know if they're a fact, I suspect that lot, that house was built when maybe they owned a lot on either side, and they were situating between a couple parcels, and then, then after they built the house, that lot was sold off. But we would permit a house six feet on the sidelines.
I knew that, yeah.
But I suspect that's how it's out there.
Is there any such thing as a mandatory beach renourishment?
Well, I was a dictator in the wood day.
If you were the what? The dictator?
Because the only solution is beach renourishment down there.
To protect everybody's home, but the people don't want it.
I understand, but that's still...
And that's what we're saying, where do we, where do we go from here? Because you got, did you, did you have anybody else that spoke at the Board of Adjustments meeting that was against the seawall?
No, ma'am.
Did Mr. Bert get a chance to speak?
At the, we didn't have a quorum in December.
Okay.
And January, the applicant didn't show. And February, Mr. Vance asked me if I had any written opposition, and I told him no. By the time they had made motion second, and Mr. Bert, he didn't speak.
But he might have heard of this, we don't know. He was at the meeting.
But he's speaking today.
And I let him know that he could write a letter stating his opposition, and to make sure he was at this meeting, to make sure that he stated his opposition at this meeting.
Okay, well, we've pretty much laid out the problems and the issues. It's a pleasure to the board what you want to do, what the board would like to do with this issue.
I'm gonna have to go ahead and go with the Board of Adjustment. I mean, we know that this is a problem, but what are we gonna do?
Well, Commissioner, before the board takes any action, I did tell Mr. Bert that I would inform the board, I mean, you already know this, but because he felt like he did not get, in his mind, an adequate opportunity to speak at the Board of Adjustment, that the BOA opinion is just advisory, and that the Board of County Commissioners is not bound by that advisory opinion. And Mr. Bolt had told me he'd be satisfied with making that record. So I think whatever happened to BOA, he's satisfied with the opportunity he got here today in the statement I just put on the record.
I mean, I just don't, I don't know how to handle this. I mean, I don't either.
You know, I mean, and, you know, this is, this is why, you know, we did, all we did back fifteen years ago was to try to ensure somebody's property didn't... Had we done that, you know, the road wouldn't be in the shape that, we're gonna have, always have problems down there, always. Some better and some worse, some years better, some... I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve this in the Board of Adjustment, send it in unanimous vote on.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
You know, this, this getting to be a hard dilemma.
It is.
We sitting up here, we got to pick and choose who gonna be able to save their property, who don't. This water, all you're doing is throwing water from one place to the next place. There ain't supposed to be a law against that. You don't supposed to be able to throw no water on your neighbor's property. But that's all these seawalls doing, and I don't like that situation. We got to come up with something better than this.
The solution is a beach out there, so the water isn't...
Right.
That's the solution. But people don't wanna pay for it, I understand that, but if you don't put a beach out there, then the water is at their house.
I know that.
Well, can I ask you a question, and then we'll go on and finish this motion out, Mr. Chairman? Can we impose something on the people?
They ain't gonna like it.
That's what I'm saying.
They ain't gonna like it. They don't, told us they don't...
But, but given, like I said, you said, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lockland said, we all realize, something's got to, something's got to go on, because if it's not, we can't be responsible.
But it's gonna be an ongoing thing, even if you did beach renourishment, in a matter of ten years, it's gonna wash all that sand away.
I say not, I say not.
And then you gotta put it back, and that's where the issue comes in at, is FEMA will not put back one hundred percent cost of this beach renourishment. They're not going to.
Well, they won't put back a beach that hasn't, that wasn't engineered to begin with, so the first cost was borne by the public, so to speak, and then after a beach is there and it gets documented, it's there, and then destroyed by a hurricane, it's a hurricane, not just erosion, but a hurricane, then FEMA will contribute in putting it back. But you've gotta put, the first time, you gotta document how much is there, the dimensions of the beach, and then you need a hurricane to wash away. If there's just erosion, which is what's going on out there, along with hurricanes, if there's just erosion, FEMA doesn't participate in erosion. Now, the state of Florida participates in erosion. They have a beach erosion control program, in fact, that would be a part of the funding source for a beach out there. The beach erosion control program, the state of Florida institutes, you got to put up half the money, they put up half the money. And so, in the last time we looked at this, ten or fifteen years ago, I forget, I do forget the cost, but let's say it was ten million dollars, we, the state of Florida would have put up five million, and we would have put up five million. Ten years ago, the five million the county was gonna put up was coming from tax, from property, I don't realize that, and we were gonna impose an MSPU on them. It went to a vote and failed by a small majority, it failed by about twenty-three votes. But yes, the funding source, state of Florida supports beach renourishment, they provide funds for it, the initial thing, they do half, and then they would also do the maintenance on half. I mean, once you get into the program of beach renourishment, and as long as the legislation funds it, and every year they have, there is funds available from the state of Florida to match something coming from another source. FEMA always steps in when you have a hurricane, and so, you know, I'm not gonna mislead anybody. This area, the beach, is eroding all the time without a hurricane.
Well, it's tricky, 'cause I see where, I see how them people feel, I mean, a lot of them don't live on the beach. Why should they do it? That's how they feel. But a lot of people who wanna come to the beach and enjoy the beach, so...
Well, right, the argument though is that if you have a good solid beach out there, even if you're not a beachfront property owner who gets the biggest benefit, everybody in the community has a benefit, because everybody's property values is tied to the aesthetic beauty of the area, and if you have an eroding shoreline with stumps and failed revetments in the water, it's not gonna be as attractive, and the overall property values of the community are depressed because of that. So the idea behind beach renourishment and everybody paying a share is that there is some benefit to everybody in the community. The beachfront owners clearly get the biggest benefit and should pay the most, but there is a gradual, so as you may recall, fifteen years ago, we had a three-tiered approach. The beachfront owners paid the most, then the ones across from the beach who could at least see the beach paid something, and then everybody else paid a third tier. So we were trying to, and that's a legally defensible mechanism, we had neighbors in Giblin, went through the process of assessing and creating a evaluation for what is fair to everybody, so you can do it that way. Now, Commissioner, like I understand what you're saying, but the problem is when you, and when you move into there, you ought to be aware of that, but people buy and sell things, and erosion happens after they buy it, and maybe they weren't aware about how bad it is out there, and they just, you know, so it's a dilemma.
Let me, let me ask a question, Mr.... So there's not a disclosure when someone buys a piece of property or buys a half and a piece of property that says this is a high erosion rate?
I have no idea.
I mean, area, there's not?
There's not a requirement for disclosure.
It needs to be that.
There's not a requirement for flood, flood disclosure. When a home is sold, they don't have to tell them, you know, that it doesn't meet base flood, and that they need to check to see if it meets base flood, and if there's a cap of fifty percent of what they can put into the house. We have people that come in, they've bought a house, they've already bought the engineered plans to redo this house, they wanna put two hundred thousand dollars into a house, the building's value's fifty thousand. Because the house is about three feet short, they can only put twenty-five thousand dollars into it. I have to break their hearts, they've already spent their retirement fund.
Well, you heard it a couple of years ago on Don't Lie, remember?
That's right, that's right.
So... This is some of the dilemmas that this board and our other boards face on, on stuff like that, and it's no, a no-win situation, because nobody's gonna win on this.
Yeah, and it takes legislators, legislators to put that in force.
Yeah.
So it's been before them several times, and it hasn't happened.
We're actually gonna have to put a seawall or something in there to protect the road.
That's correct.
I mean, that's gonna deflect, that's gonna deflect too, but what are we supposed to do? You gotta have a road to get, people gotta have a road to get to their homes, and you gotta protect the road, you just can't keep letting the road go away, because things gonna eventually not help us fix it.
Yeah.
I mean, so it's a dilemma all the way up and down the beach there. I don't know what the issue is. We tried to do beach renourishment, the people voted it down, so obviously they don't want beach renourishment. If you had beach renourishment, it would protect Mr. Bolt's house, and the man next door wouldn't have to put the seawall in, and it just compounds and goes on and on and on up and down the beach there, so... Anyway, we do have a motion and a second here on the floor. Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Does the record reflect, Mr. Lockley opposed? The motion does carry.
I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration and tremendous positive conversation about this. I just wanted to let you know, just as a friend of the Franklin County Commission, I will take a self-imposed study on this entire issue and see if there's some things that I can come up with on this dilemma, both state and federal, that might make some mitigation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We've done this here. Next will be Mr. Kirk Blair, TDC.
Good morning, Commissioners. Okay, so, we've given you, we've given you the collections report for, which is up to date as of November. We collected forty-nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars and seventy-four cents in the month of November, which was an increase of about thirty, a little over thirty-three hundred dollars over November of two thousand sixteen. This is the second month in the fiscal year, and overall, with this increase, we're only down four percent as compared to last year. You remember last month, we were down eight or nine percent, so we're getting there, but, you know, we're still seeing a very erratic kind of response to the numbers. I've discussed with you from time to time the various reasons, you know, both, you know, the change in the makeup of tourists in the country and locally, the issues about, you know, national reservation programs like VRBO that we don't have a real handle on, and, but still and all, the bottom line is, in terms of collections, we're, we're down a little bit from last year, which is generally a pretty positive time of the year. I'm beginning to work on our budget for next year, and we're gonna look closely at the numbers in April to be sure that our proposed budget reflects those variations, but, you know, and it may well be, because we can't always predict it, that we'll have an outstanding spring, and it'll make up for the whole difference, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on it. Um...
Tim, can I...
Sir.
Oh, Mr. Blair, you know, y'all, y'all know TDC, and y'all bring people in, beaches included, what y'all got set up for something like a beach renourishment?
I'm sorry, sir, set up...
What do y'all have set up for something like a beach renourishment project? I mean, that part of, people come to, people visit, see the beaches.
Well, Commissioner, actually, the statutes do provide for funds for beach renourishment out of the tourist development funds, and I'd have to go back and check, and certainly the attorney may know better than I. I believe the beach renourishment funds are a separate, they'd have to be enacted as an additional tax, tourist tax, but there is a vehicle for doing that, should you all decide to go that route. I haven't looked at it recently, so I'd, I'd have to go back and research it.
Commissioner Lockley, I was not aware that this issue was coming up today, but my recollection of the statute is that up to, I believe it's ten percent of your current revenues could be allocated towards beach renourishment. It has been a few years since I've gone back and looked at the statute, so I don't know if they've made any legislative changes in the last couple of sessions, but years ago when I looked at that, that was the answer at that time. I don't know about having to enact any new taxes, I think it's just given...
Uh, but years ago, when I looked at that, that, that was the answer at that time. I, I don't know about having to enact any new taxes. I think it's just, uh, given the, the size of our county population, that would allow us to use up to a maximum of ten percent of the, the gross revenues.
Yeah, I agree.
That would have to be part of your spending plan, and, and right now, beach re-nourishment is not part of your spending plan either, so.
Well, the reason I asked, I, I be listening on TV, and they said, um, county, 'cause they bigger than us to the west, they be hollering, they be saying that TDC was helping due to re-nourishment. Okay.
Uh, okay, um, we're just about ready to go live on our new website. We've been working on this for some time, and it's been a, been a big task for the, our webmasters. And it goes a long way to integrating our Forgotten Coast theme into our brand elements and into our internet marketing. So, you'll be seeing, uh, some changes in that. Uh, I expect it'll be live in the next couple of weeks. The board, uh, your board, asked, uh, a while back if we would look at the issue about sustaining grants. And, uh, the board asked me to come and, and, and talk with you about that a little bit this morning. Uh, we've, we've looked, as, as, as you know, we've got seven projects that, that are in our sustaining grant program, which get, uh, twenty thousand dollars a year, uh, for, uh, keeping their doors open. Now, this program was initiated back six or seven years ago. I think it was Commissioner Putnul that, that, uh, initiated the program. And it was designed to assist nonprofits that have facilities that, um, that, that were having a difficult time during the slow time of the year to stay open, you know, to help them keep their doors open. So, the program that was designed, uh, gave them twenty thousand dollars, and, uh, that sum was arrived at, uh, mostly because when we figured out how much it would cost to, you know, to keep somebody in the facility for forty hours a week, uh, with, you know, with benefits and taxes and all that sort of stuff, it, it sort of, it came to around twenty thousand dollars. So, that's how we, that's how we got to the number that we give to the, to the nonprofits. And as I say, uh, the, uh, they have to be nonprofits, and they, and they have to have a facility, or there's no issue about keeping them open, of course. And, uh, over the years, uh, that program has evolved, and, and, uh, all of those nonprofits are, uh, part of our overall brand elements that, that we're promoting year-round. So, uh, we have, we reevaluated the program a, a year or so ago, and, uh, there were, uh, you know, we looked at all seven of them. There were some differences in the, in the individual grants, uh, recipients, but all of them, uh, came and reported to the board and, uh, went over their finances with us, and, and, uh, most of them were, uh, it was real clear that if they didn't get the, the grant funds, they wouldn't be able to, uh, sustain their, their work. I give you this, this background, uh, because our board now has gone back and looked at the program at your request. And there are a couple of ways that, that, in, included in your request was trying to figure out a way, if there was a way to add more, uh, programs to the, more agencies or, or groups to the program. There are a couple of ways to do that, uh, but they fall down in generally two categories. One is that we can, uh, put into place a system whereby gradually we reduce the amount of money that, uh, each of the, each of the recipients get, or we phase them out completely. Uh, and, and so, there's, there's a whole issue about reduce, reduction, uh, which brings with it some, you know, some issues, some problems. The other, uh, possibility is to, uh, increase the funding to the whole program, and therefore then be able to add one or two, two more. Uh, our board has gone back and forth on this. We've had some, uh, lengthy discussions about it. Excuse me. They asked that I, uh, explain it to you today and, and see if you might wanna give me some guidance about which direction they would, they might wanna go in. Uh, basically, we can cut programs, uh, to free up some money to, to add new programs, or, uh, we, when we do our budgeting, we can go in and, and see if we can carve out some additional funds for, uh, uh, one or two extra programs. And I'm just looking for your wisdom and guidance on that.
Anybody wanna start the discussion?
I wanna ask a question, if I can, just to clarify, uh, what I remember, and it could be completely wrong. When we were discussing sustaining grants during the, the budget process, seems like I remember that some of the discussion was about the fact that the sustaining grant program does not have a sunset to it. There again, it's not trying to cut out anybody, but the idea that I perceive behind the program is to get exactly what the word means, sustain. To get these entities to where they are sustainable, uh, not really so much of a, for lack of a better term, a welfare system where if they don't have this, they're gonna close their doors. Uh, so, I, I, in my remembrance, that was the discussion we had, as far as, uh, looking to add. Because at the same time, we said, "If there's a sunset, or there's a program that appears not to be sustaining, then we can free up that money to add people that have not been accessed to this as of yet." That's what I remember. I don't know if the rest of the board remembers that way. Just some thoughts I had on it.
Commissioner, we have discussed that issue at length, because you're right. I mean, we could put a sunset on the program, which would ultimately mean that, I mean, let's just say we said two more years for all of the recipients, and then we'll go off and do something else, and, you know, and find some others. Uh, as we looked at that, however, uh, you know, those, those program, most, vast majority of those programs would not, uh, be able to continue providing services at their facilities if we did that. Now, there are one or two that could. I mean, I, I think we understand that. But, uh, the, you know, sustaining means keeping them going, and, or at least that's the way it's been interpreted. And, uh, there are some that are very valuable programs. They contribute to our brand. You know, we, they, they help us promote the county. They're, uh, historical, uh, museums, you know, things like that. And to, uh, cut them, they probably no longer be there. So, uh, our board has, has, has not recommended that. Uh, we can go back and look at that and, and move in that direction if that's your preference. Uh, but they have, they have, uh, talked about that option at, at length.
How long they been on it?
About seven years.
Tell me, they, since we started, right?
Pardon?
Ever since we started?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what we supposed to do? Keep them on there till the we end?
That, that is one option for some of them, yes.
That one option. They gonna need to be on there to, what about the other people who don't have a chance?
That's, that's why the other option is looking for more money to add some that haven't had the opportunity yet.
I think it should be a sunset on it. I mean, you know, if you got seven years, I ain't trying to be against nobody, I'm full. But if you got other people out there that got ideas, and they, and we, we can't get them the opportunity to get started because these people, for some kinda reason, they failing, or they, they haven't made it on their own. I mean, this is Franklin County for everybody, not Franklin County for somebody. One or two.
I also agree. How, how do we get there? I don't know, but, uh, you know, you, you wanna help people out, but at, at some point, these businesses or whatever we're sustaining, has gotta be able to sustain itself. Uh, if not, the business I work for would like to get one of these grants. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm not, I'm like Mr. Lockley. I'm not against anybody, but there has to be a, there has to be a way of reducing this. In my opinion, Kirk, every year. If you, if you getting twenty grand, well, next year, you not gonna give it fifteen. And next year, you not gonna give it but ten, which frees up money for a new entity to be able to come in and give them a step up. But then they got to realize, next year, theirs is going back down, you know? And it allows people to continually, if they wanna start a new business, be nonprofit or whatever. I mean, we, there's a lot of nonprofits, but there's gotta be sustainability to a nonprofit. A nonprofit don't mean that, as, as long as we giving them twenty grand, they gonna be here every year to get that twenty grand. And they're never gonna be sustainable 'cause they need that twenty grand. Okay? I mean, I'm just being blunt, I guess.
Well, then, in the meantime, you got new groups coming?
That can't get in the program.
Can't get no, no help.
But if you step it down, then that allows to free up some funds without having to allocate more funds into this program and taking away from other promotions or other things that you're doing. When you add money into a program, you gotta cut some other program. That's what we have to do every year. If we don't wanna raise taxes, then we gotta cut something if we wanna bring something new in, 'cause there's only so much money, you know, so, so you.
Did they show you where they spend the twenty thousand dollars every year? Did they give you a printout where it's spent at?
Yes, yes.
And it's spent on the business?
Yes.
That's easy to write down.
If you, if, if that would be the direction that you're looking to go in, I, that, that's exactly what our board, that, the whole issue about scaling down, ratcheting down the amount from year to year would be, uh, most likely the direction our board would take. Uh, they wouldn't cut anybody out immediately. I don't think there's much sentiment to doing that on the board, but that, they'd probably begin looking at, okay, you get it for a certain amount of time, and then the next year, you go down, and, you know, ultimately, you get reduced to the point where you're not receiving funds. I think there's sentiment on our board to do that, if that's the direction you wanted to go in. Of course, there'll be complaints, as there always are, and, you know, we'll have to deal with that.
And they'll call us.
Yeah.
They'll call us and say, "Why can't I get my twenty grand"?
Yeah.
But I mean.
You take one grand out of your salary every year, you gonna be calling us?
But if you're gonna start something, then you have to have a plan to make it sustainable, and not sustainable on the government.
Right.
You have to have a private plan to make, make your business sustainable.
And I understand, like, if you don't do something to, um, initiate the groups going out and getting on their own a little bit and bringing some more money into there, then they're gonna stay on that sustainable grant forever. And then I'm, I, I've, I've been saying, and I'm on record to say that I'm concerned about the new groups that comes in. And number one, I'm concerned about a group that's been there eleven years, and they still don't meet the criteria on the paperwork in time, when that's been the same rule over and over for year after year.
Yep.
And that's the thing. I mean, we had this situation last year, I'm not gonna mention it, but, I mean, that's the thing. But with this, we're gonna have to tell the TDC board, or ask the TDC board to look into this, and have Kirk look into it with the attorney, and look at some kind of sunset provision in here, that we can do that and, and say, "Okay, you're capped at this, and if you do not, you know, we're gonna let you know, when, when you meet that parameter or whatever, your money's gonna decrease by that much. And it's gonna keep on decreasing until we're gonna actually get you out of the obligation of it." You got somebody's hand back there.
And I, I don't think.
And everything, so.
And I don't think we should, I mean, you said it been there seven years. I don't think we should allow another, another seven, not even half. Because, hey, what, what you gonna, what you gonna allow the new ones that come in? We got to start somewhere. We didn't start, we made a mistake. We didn't start in the beginning saying, "This gonna last for this amount of day, this amount of year, this amount of time." But we got to start somewhere in saying that, and how long it's gonna do it, and we got to, we got to phase out and phase in. That's all to it.
Do, do you have a lot of entities that wanna get in, into the program, Kirk?
You know, Commissioner, uh.
Or is that a year to year? Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't?
Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. I've heard from two or three, uh, that have indicated that they would like to. Frankly, some don't have facilities to maintain anyway, so they're really not, it isn't a question about keeping them open, you know, they're.
They don't have facilities?
Yeah, I mean, not all.
So, are you sustaining something that don't have no facilities?
No, 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 I'm saying new ones that have come to me that have said, "Oh gee, I'd like a sustaining grant." Well, they didn't have a building, so.
Well, they, I, I obviously don't, don't, don't meet the criteria for that.
But I've heard of, of one or two that have indicated an interest, that do have facilities and would like to get, get the funding, yeah.
Well, and, and you got to look to, Mr. Chairman.
They like the funding, but do they need the funding?
That's right.
Well, we haven't gone.
Are we talking about an entitlement program here, or what?
We're trying to define the program now, I think, but whether, whether that's the case. I mean, I think the direction I'm getting from you is, is you all, is that we wanna find a way to make the current recipients less dependent on the program.
That's correct.
By ratcheting down their, their, the money they get, and in turn, picking up some others who will also ratchet down a bit.
That's correct. That's the way I think the program needs to work.
And we talked about this last year, if you remember. And we talked about it the year before.
But they want direction, yeah, they want direction from this board, because whoever gets ratcheted down is gonna be making phone calls to this board.
This board.
And this board makes a decision, and it can't react and call Mr. Blair and say, "Oh, you gotta do something different now." When you give the, when you give the TDC direction, you gonna stand by it. So, if you got opposition or, or you don't feel like we doing the right thing here this morning, giving guidance, you need to speak up. And don't call Mr. Blair three months from now and say, "Oh, we gotta do something different." This is, this is been problematic, problematic for this board. It's when we make a decision, if you don't believe in it, or you're opposed to it, say you opposed to it. Don't sit there and say you good with it, and then try to call somebody else two or three months later and say, "Well, you need to do this, or you need to do that." You need to stand up, make a decision as a board, and stand by your decision. So, these people, and I'm not just using him for an analogy, but there's a lot of different other instances where we sit here as a board, and we make a decision, but then down the road, we wanna change our mind, and it's too, it's too late. Once we make a decision as a board up here, then we need to stand by the decision that's been made.
Every business could use twenty thousand dollars a year.
I know I could.
Yeah.
I know I could.
Can I make a comment, please?
If, come forward, state your name for the record. We've already had public comment, but I'll give you just a little bit to say what you need to say. State your name for the record.
I'm Leslie Cox. Um, I'm Vice President of Carabelle Cares. We manage the Carabelle History Museum. Um, and yes, we do get a sustaining grant, twenty thousand dollars a year, but I'd just like to remind you that this is tourist development money. It's paid into the county by the tourists that come here to participate in the services that our museums and other facilities provide. We were, uh, tasked, or asked, or we felt the need that we could, uh, participate as nonprofits by creating a facility, or an exhibit, or a program that would bring in tourists, and we do. Our, the numbers have been increasing every single year. But without this sustaining money, a group of volunteers get from the tourist development monies that come in by our visitors, we would not be able to keep the doors open. Uh, the Carabelle History Museum employs, we don't employ, but we contract with four, uh, professionals. One's a curator, one's the public relations, one's tech support, and then we also have maintenance. So, we have, provide, uh, salaries for these people through their contracts. That's four people that are making money off of the tourism money that comes into this county, from this one facility in Carabelle. We have all kinds of programs. We fill up our history talks every time we have one. And I would just hate to see that money go away, because it does sustain that museum for Carabelle, and ultimately, the county. Uh, we started out with seed money, that you might consider. You wouldn't give us full funding until we proved that we could actually stay open, keep people coming in. We got five thousand dollars. Uh, I think we got five thousand dollars, uh, and, or ten thousand dollars a year, maybe it was, half, and we got in two checks, something like that. So, we did that for a few years until we could prove it. But just remember that we do keep the doors open and keep people coming in. Thank you.
And that's what every sustaining grant receiver's gonna say. So, how do, how do we fix quagmire of these other people that wanna get into the program? I mean, you just can't take all the TDC revenues and turn it into a sustaining grant, and just run a sustaining grant program with the TDC. I mean, this, this is the issue that I was warning the board about a while ago. When you make a decision, you're gonna stand by your decision, whatever that decision is. Uh, every, every member up here has a vote and, and has the ability to give direction. Every member up here has a vote and has the ability to give direction, but, you know, you got some people that want to get in, some people can't get in, so, there we go. And he's got more reports to go, so we need to give the man some direction and move on, because we're not even halfway through his report yet.
Well, there's, I mean, we can do some sort of a hybrid, Mr. Chairman. We could come up with some money for another one, and we could develop some criteria for the, I mean.
You've got to treat everybody fair, Kirk.
That's right.
You can't treat people because they're rich or poor, or black or white, or male or female. As government entity, everybody has to be treated fairly. So, you cannot have a group of people in a sustaining grant program getting $20,000 with the people over in his group, you're going to be stepped down every year. You can't do it that way, or in my opinion, you can't. And I think everybody that's ever been here to a meeting that I've been at, I think people need to be treated fairly and equitably. So, making two different programs is not going to work for me.
I make a motion we put a sunset on it. Make a motion we put a sunset on it, limit it to a certain amount of years. How many years, we got to figure out, but, I mean, you got the same people in the, in the county, we got other people who want to try this, and they sitting out there in the cold. You got the people who on the bus claiming they not, they can't do it on their own. Well, if you can't do it on your own in seven years, 10 years, what it going to take? Another seven? Another 10? These people got to wait? Another seven, another 10? Somebody should have been out of that group, out of that group what started. And somebody, it should have been pretty good success, and it should have been, now, open the door for these other people to come in. And if you get to the situation, hey, I know this coming, this $20,000, all I got to do is fill out this application. Some of that's going on, too. Just got to look at it. And we got, we used to say Franklin County, not a select few, the whole of Franklin County. That's what I ran.
Kirk, I think you got X amount of dollars in the program. That's the reason I asked the question earlier, was it every year, somebody wanted to get in, or sometimes is it just the few that's in? I mean, you got X amount of dollars that you can allocate, and if you don't have anybody new that wants to get in, it's not an issue. When you got people that want to get in, then it's a different issue. But I agree with Mr. Lockley. I think it's a sunset at some point, and he's not giving you general direction as, as to win it, but I think the motion that he was trying to make is, y'all need to look at it and find a way to make some of this stuff work, and eventually, it's going to have to sunset, or, you know, if you don't have no way of sustaining a nonprofit, or whoever it is using a sustainable grant, then you need to go back and look at your plan and figure out, you know, this money's not going to be there forever, and you need to, whether you need to do more fundraising, whether you need to go out and try to gather more contributions, whether you have to charge visitors when they come through the door to visit museums, or what, whatever you got to do to raise the money to keep it going. I mean, there's other ways besides using a sustainable grant program, I guess you would say. But whatever you do, you're going to get a phone call. We all anticipate that, you know?
Goes with the territory.
Any other comments from the board?
Is that a motion?
We have a motion, but no second.
I'm not clear on what the motion was for, Mr. Lockley.
I make a motion that we make these sustainable grants, a sunset, maybe three years.
Well, Commissioner Lockley, if I may suggest maybe send by that motion a directive back to the TDC for them to formulate a specific plan of action to be brought back to you as a board of county commissioners, whatever type of sunsetting alternatives they want you to consider, because they're, they're the boards that you've appointed to manage the TDC funds. They're the ones that are most familiar with these programs and how they operate. Let the TDC come back with some recommendations on the alternate, or alternative ways in which you can sunset the sustainable grants, and then you can pick one of those alternates, or you can modify one of those alternates, or you can reject them all and make them come back with a different alternative, as opposed to trying to do something right now on the spot, is my suggestion.
Yeah, I make it, will I change my motion and make that motion for y'all to both come back with a recommendation on the sunset, how much time, but y'all should have been done the study.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Continue, Mr. Blair.
Okay, I'll try to make the rest of the report brief, Commissioner. You, we sent you a copy of the TDC plan at the last meeting. Our board has, this is our biannual plan. Our board has now adopted it, and I've given a copy to Mr. Schuler, and I think you passed a motion at the last meeting to go ahead with a workshop or an ordinance process, and we'll wait for your, for you to do that, maybe in April.
Mr. Blair, real quick, real quick, on this biannual plan, and you've included a lot of documents of different bills that's being discussed and all that as it relates to TDC, I'm not comfortable, and you tell me, when does this plan have to be adopted by the board of county commissioners?
Commissioner, we're in the first year of the two-year cycle that is not covered by a plan, so we're a few months, you know, behind. The beginning of that, the first year, would be October 1st of 2017. I don't think there's a live or die date for when you get it done, and so, we can, but after a while, it begins to be, you know, be tardy.
But the legislative session's over in the first week of March?
Yes.
And then we'll know about all this other stuff that may be coming down the pike or not?
Yes.
As far as different legislations, and I, I'd rather table not, and not take up this biannual plan until after that date, so we know exactly what Tallahassee's doing, and some of those things may have to be incorporated into this plan? That's just my feeling. I don't know about the rest of the board members.
I think there'd be prudent, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I read through all the stuff you sent us last night, and all the bills that are pending, and where they're at this week and last week, and there's just some things there that I think, that if it comes, if it is passed out of the House and the Senate, then there's going to be some things that need to be incorporated into this. And I don't see us adopting this plan and then have to come back and re-adopt it. So, I, by motion of the board, I'd like to table the, table the adoption of this biannual plan, if somebody could do that on the board.
I'd like to make a motion to tabling the adoption of the biannual plan for TDC.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Proceed, Mr. Blair.
To that point on the legislation, the only thing I'll say is, we don't know what's going to come out of the whole process, just as you said, Mr. Chairman, and we'll, we'll see, but it's got a lot of meaty stuff in it that could affect us considerably. So, I think your suggestion is well-taken, and we'll act accordingly. I think Jason Puckett reported you about the fly-in this morning, so I won't talk about that anymore. You've got a copy of the flyer that went out on that. I just wanted to report, we've submitted two Visit Florida grant applications now two weeks ago. One will be to develop a website for our Highway 98 corridor project, and the second is to increase our exposure to writers and influencers with, with a variety of techniques that are available through Visit Florida. I reported to you last month that we hosted two writers from China, and we did. This month, the board approved visits from a German writer specializing in sport fishing and sport fishing publications, which we're doing in concert with Visit Florida. And in addition, we're sponsoring or co-sponsoring a visit from a writer to, for a writer from New York with the Appalachian Chamber. Camp Gordon Johnson reported to our board last week that their building is ready for use, and it'll be in use in time for the Camp Gordon Johnson days in March. I also provided you some information for the American Junior Golf Association sanctioned golf tournament, which would be held at St. James Bay. Our board took action to partner with the AJGA in holding a youth golf tournament at St. James. It's expected to bring in approximately 80 youngsters to Franklin County in August, and becoming a participant with the association brings national and international attention to our local golf course and is expected to have some long-term value promotionally. The next meeting of the TDC will be April 11th at 2:00 at East Point. I'm going to be gone a bit in March, but for those times that I'm not available, Deb Davis will be available. I've introduced her to you all, and I'll be available to her if she needs anything, so. And that's the end of my report.
Any other comments from the board, Mr. Blair?
Yeah, I want to ask you one question.
Sir.
How much y'all paid that man, that fisherman from Germany?
How much did we pay him?
Yeah.
Oh, we don't pay him anything. What we do is, we pay for some of his expenses while he's here. We don't actually pay the writers, but the understanding is that they have to supply us a commitment, that they're going to have articles about having visited here and the industry that they're reporting on, and then we'll, we'll cover their housing and some of their travel expenses.
Will you try to get them to get people from Germany to come in?
Yeah, it kind of dovetails with what Visit Florida's doing and promoting. Germany is a particularly good international market for us, and Florida gets a good deal, a good number of the German tourists, so that's part of what our 98 corridor project is about, to drive them up from Orlando when they get here. And, yeah, we're hopeful that that's going, we're going to open up the idea that in addition to all the other things we have here, sport fishing is a good, good activity here, and hopefully, they'll come up and anticipate it.
Any other comments, Mr. Blair? Thank you, Kirk, for coming in today.
Thank you.